We're going to start the review session, and it's a review session of the meeting. We have organized on second meeting, we have organized 111 for two, and organized to approve our own tax extension and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and Nineteen New Street Urban Revue LLC. Organized on first meeting, organized for one is the term of the request of the City of New Brunswick, organized for two is held at the request of the City of New Brunswick, and we have organized 121 for three, and organized to amend a supplemental device, organized of the City of New Brunswick, and for ten vehicles and traffic, scheduled for nine parking zones for handicappers. We are adding fourteen handicap parking zones and deleting forty handicap parking zones. Organized one of four, has been held at the request of the City of New Brunswick. Going on to resolution. Resolution for 121 for one, approval amendment, agenda amendments. Resolution for two, approved payroll, eleven eight fourteen to eleven twenty one fourteen, and begin the twenty fourteen management interactive payroll. Resolution for three, authorized income for within tax sales certificate. Resolution for four, approved amendment of resolution one of one for forty one, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of five hundred and twenty seven to Benedict Alman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Anderson versus Anthony Caputo, from nine thousand eight hundred and eighty five fifteen to ten thousand four hundred and twelve fifty. Resolution four oh five, approved amendment of resolution zero nine one three nine, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of six hundred and three fifty to Benedict Alman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Rico Rodriguez versus the City of New Brunswick, from two thousand six hundred and fifty two to three thousand two hundred and fifty two fifty. Resolution four oh six, approved amendment of resolution one of one for four, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of five hundred and thirty five fifty to Meitzner and Meitzner, the police officer Andrew Weiss, in the matter of the leaders versus police officer Andrew Weiss, from seven thousand six hundred and ninety two fifty to twenty thousand two hundred and twenty nine. Resolution four seven, approved amendment of resolution one 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 for twenty seven, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of five hundred sixty five forty to Meitzner and Meitzner for police officer Bradford Dell in the matter of the Lodge versus police officer Bradford Dell, from eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty to eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty five forty. Resolution four eight, authorized tax collector to transfer overpayments on several taxes and utility accounts. Resolution four oh nine, approved of Paris Raffo merchandise around town valley borsa for the Easter Seals New Jersey on January ninth, twenty fifteen. Resolution for ten, approved on Paris Raffo casino night at the Pearl Shore Theater Company for F and A and M and the Chris Moore Grand Lodge, progressive lodge number seventeen on December thirty first, twenty fourteen. Resolution for eleven, approved twenty fifteen city council meeting state. Resolution for twelve, authorized property lien for border security at ten thousand street, the amount is five hundred and twenty nine sixty three. Resolution four thirteen, authorized property lien for the mortgage expenses on which the location is three ten thousand street, and the amount is three thousand two hundred dollars. Resolution four fourteen, authorized property lien for border security at eighty has street, and the amount is one thousand twenty seven eleven. Resolution four fifteen, authorized resolution for the City of New Brunswick to enter into an agreement with Minnesota County for the Minnesota Land and Road Diet Concept Engineering Design. Resolution four sixteen, approved request for use of city sidewalk requested by friends lending a hand, the location is intersection of Albany and York Street, the far side, where cold food and clothing drive to the median Saturday, December thirteenth, twenty fourteen, from nine AM to one PM. Resolution four seventeen, authorized purchase by police department of the state contract eight dash eighty one three forty eight from Lightning and Associates for seven bulletproof vests for the police department, not to exceed five thousand one hundred and eighty two tenths. Resolution four eighteen, approved amendment of resolution zero one one for forty, the reason is to increase the increase in number of tax appeals in the amount of ten thousand and twelve hundred and ninety nine dollars and two cars, L L C, for special counsel tax appeals, from fifty thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars. Resolution four nineteen, authorized purchase by the fire department of the state contract eight dash eighty five five twenty eight tires, boots, and services from F and S Tire Corporation for fifteen tires for various vehicles for the police department, not to exceed six thousand nine hundred and forty eight cents. Resolution four twenty, approved water contract with clean air company for provide tire maintenance and repairs contract with Lionel Banks system, which is the resource system and all three firehouses, the term is twelve months commencing on December fourth, twenty fourteen, and end in December third, twenty fifteen, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Resolution four twenty one, approved amendment of resolution zero six one for seven, the reason is to pay the final invoice of one thousand nine hundred and forty three fifty five with giveback card transmission for transmission repair services for the police department, not to exceed one thousand nine hundred and forty three fifty five, and that full of this amount will not constitute an increase of twenty percent of more than the amount of the original contract. Resolution four twenty two, approved water contract for rehabilitation home improvement is one grand, Lionel Dan Davis and Brian Black's eight inch boot of old, not to exceed seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars. Resolution four twenty three, approved water contract with only three X team for repairing and be ready of truck tires for public works and fire department, the term is four months commencing on December fourth, twenty fourteen, and end in December third, twenty fifteen,[410.02]
And have less reliance on cars. There is a system, I was referring to the Mobodo, where it says we're the fifth most exciting small city in the country. There's also another website out there called Walk Score that rates downtown New Brunswick over ninety on that score as a walker's paradise. Downtown is the place where you're supposed to build high-density housing, which you can get around and not have the need for multiple cars. You might need a car, but you don't have to be a two- or three-car family to live in downtown New Brunswick.
I do agree with Mr. Patterson on that. There should be high-density housing in downtown New Brunswick. We should not be giving them presents. They should be paying for our school children to get educated here in New Brunswick. That's the cost of doing business here. That's what the cost should be. We're on a high-density transportation line directly to New York City. We are the place to be. They do not need any more breaks. Again, I do beg to differ, though. This will cause traffic backups. There's going to be one hundred and twenty-one vehicles trying to get into the parking deck and out of the parking deck, probably, possibly every day. And also, sorry, I'm also going to create a thought. Also, if people cannot find parking or have a car that they do not have a parking spot in the building, they might be so.
If they don't have a parking space in the building, they're going to have to drive around and look for parking, which has been, many, many studies have proven, vastly increases traffic in an area. Thank you.
Good evening, Latin Council President, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradville of New Brunswick. I want to second most of what Mr. Larabino said there. I think it's quite clear that there are some issues with the building. Not so much that the building is a bad thing, but that it needs to support the people that it's bringing here. And so what I mean by that is, you know, two-hundred-and-thirty-four apartments. Surely, there will be some children living in this building, and they will attend the public schools, most likely, or possibly. There's a potential for children to attend the public schools. But if you approve this exemption tonight, the building, which will be a multimillion-dollar building, will be highly valued, will not pay any taxes to the school system for thirty years. And I think that that is a concern. I want to ask, has there been any research done into, you know, estimating how many children might end up living in this building?
Mr. Patterson, you know, I know that most of the apartments have one-bedroom studios, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom apartments.
Yes, my friend, councilman. Most of them are smaller studios and one-bedrooms, and generally, high-rise buildings such as this do not generate a lot of children. It's not the style of building that, you know, someone with, you know, two or three kids is going to be looking to live in. And particularly, in these units, there are only a small number of two-bedroom units in there, which would really be the only ones that could accommodate any children. And mostly, those will probably tend to not rent to the family. It's not that style of housing. We have other housing in town that is more attractive to the families and so forth. Not that a family can't rent here, but that's usually not the target market of these types of buildings.
There will be seventy-three units, perhaps, in that building.
Thank you. So I have to ask again, was there any research done into how many children potentially could live there or are estimated to end up living here?
He just answered the question. He said that it was a story, and usually, the address at that time does not attract unshaven children because of their weight.
Yes, with all due respect, he indicated that. He didn't cite the source or any type of research. I was asking, what has been done to look into this?
Mr. Patterson, can you cite your report?
Looking at market studies for these types of buildings, you'll see that they tend to generate not a lot of children in these properties. We had done, not on this particular building, but looked at the actual children generated out of some of the other downtown buildings, and there were, you know, very few. I believe at one time, we looked at the, what's now Plaza Square, and I think that with four hundred units down there, it was generating, I believe, about five school-aged children.
Thank you. I am very concerned about this. As you recall, more than a year ago, there was a vote on another new building, the Fifth Ward, and that project, actually, the council was split. You know, some people voted to give the exemption, and Council President, you voted against, and I believe you voted to abstain when that came out. And I think that there were several key differences between this project and the other. The first of which has already been pointed out, that this project would have no affordable housing component, whereas the other project, for what it's worth, agreed to make, I think, twenty percent of the units in the building, you know, set aside for low and moderate-income folks. This project doesn't do that. So one of the main reasons that was cited for why the council approved one of these similar agreements is not in effect here. And so I want to see, what is the developer doing to make up for that? What are they doing to give back to the community that makes it worth the city giving them this gift?
Are you talking about, which side you call it, the new one?
Somerset Street.
That's why I have to do the word.
I'm saying they have affordable units there.
He just said that at that time, that was part of the reason why it was voted. He said that there's, this one was still having the affordable units. So why is the developer, that's his question. Why is the developer going to, I guess, to, as an incentive, I guess, to the community to do that?
Mr. Patterson?
Developers providing new housing supply for the city of New Brunswick. The city's population has grown very rapidly over the last twenty to thirty years. The supply of housing has not kept up with that rise in population. Just providing more housing units in the local supply helps satisfy some of the demand that's in the city. It won't satisfy all the demand. There's, the housing construction in the city has lagged well beyond the, behind the population growth, and there needs to be more housing development here to meet that demand. As Mr. Larabino was saying, it's a popular place to live. You need to build more housing to accommodate that demand.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Yes, respectfully, I think that the wealthy folks who will most likely be occupying these luxury units in the building are not the ones in New Brunswick who need assistance from the council, who need a break from the council. And in fact, like Mr. Larabino said, they should be paying in full taxes to the city and the school system and not being given any breaks to build this building. I think that it is, in fact, the low-income folks who are overcrowding in housing and need housing. And this building does admittedly nothing for them. So I think my question still stands. What is the developer doing for, you know, the real New Brunswick, the rest of New Brunswick?
Just answer you that we are, there's a need for housing because with this building, we are addressing all the needs that we have to terms of housing. That we are not, that this development will not address the other need of those who are low income, but it does is fulfilling the need that we have and increasing the housing. We grew up, just in the last census, we went from, we are like over fifty-five now. So there is a need. So at this time, you know, I guess if the developer is doing, what he's doing at this time with that building, then he just decided to do it for this particular population, and we cannot punish him for that. But we have done, and like Mr. Patterson said, that we have to, in other development projects, that we have been having to refer to housing them. And that's something that we will continue to have, that's the need, that it's not only the need to our city, it's the need to other cities as well. So it's not that we have not done anything about it. We have been, there's in those units that have included, it's just so happened that this building doesn't include any affordable units. But it's unfair to say that we have not done any affordable housing in New Brunswick because we have for many years.
Right, right. And I don't think I said that. If I did, I'm incorrect. But what I do want to add is, this is two-hundred-and-thirty-four apartments, luxury apartments. They're going to be expensive. You say market rate, but that means, you know, more than a thousand dollars per apartment. How many affordable units has the city built this year, let's say?
No, not this year.
Or how many projects have they given abatements to for affordable housing?
We've given tax abatements to probably pretty much, if not all, pretty close to all of the affordable housing projects in town, whether it's, you know, Providence Square for senior citizens, the townhouses on Remsen Avenue, several projects like that down there, Hope Manor, Riverside Apartments, they all have long-term tax exemptions.
And more recently, they do have some, they're George.
Yes, yes, yes.
They do have some.
And the taxes and the pilots that they pay are substantially smaller than what this project will pay.
So just before the record, none of those projects were approved this year or built this year. But this year, we're building two-hundred-and-thirty-four luxury apartments.
There were some, this year, well, some of them take one year to build. So now I don't know. Most of the recent one was a job.
Well, actually, the most recent one was the supportive needs housing at first, before the church. We've done that. Most recently, the city has been concentrating on developing supportive needs housing for the homeless in the city. We've done five projects. The most recent one is just up the street, but in a dwelling, which is downtown. We've been doing that. We have, as you've indicated, we have a number of projects, senior citizen rental projects, low-modern-income ownership projects that benefit from the tax abatement programs also to allow them to get built as part of the financing to make these projects happen.
So even more recently, what happened with that, especially needs, that we have done more than any other.
Yes.
And I want to commend you for that and say that's awesome. I think that's a good thing. But just to put in perspective, each of those two projects, the supportive needs projects were ten units. So we're talking about two-hundred-and-thirty-four luxury units and twenty supportive housing, much-needed units. And I think that's lopsided. I think that we should be, you know, rethinking that and rethinking how we're approaching this proposal for a building on a very important spot in downtown that perhaps could be improved. So I do want to, just for the record, make clear that if the city raises taxes on the homeowners and property owners in town, with the amount of the pilot payment, the payment in lieu of taxes the developer makes, would that go up at the same rate, or would it not be tied at all to the rate that everyone else is paying in town?
Mr. Patterson?
Pilot payment is based on the revenues generated by the project. So as rents go up annually in the project, which they normally do, the pilot payment can go up on an annual basis. There are also steps that are in the statute that has to pay certain minimums at certain points during the abatement phase, it backing towards the full payment of taxes. So it may not be exactly the way Mr. Cradville just phrased it, but the pilot payments do go up over time.
Thank you. Last point I want to make is just that this building is going to bring people to town. It's going to need supportive infrastructure. When we were talking about the Somerset Street project, I guessed the council, specifically Councilwoman Garlotti, came through and got a crosswalk at East Miconic because I had said that it's, you know, not right to build a building there when there's not even any type of pedestrian improvements there. And I noticed the crosswalk's already been faded, and it's worn out, it's wear, and it needs more of an update. So I would suggest that this building, over the course of thirty years.
Will you finish your sentence?
This building, over the course of thirty years, is going to need a lot of improvements in the surrounding area that taxpayers will be on the hook for. So please, please, I urge you not to vote for this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anybody, yes, sir? Five minutes. Well, the same thing.
One more question, please.
We can. Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the council with these specific ordinance? I mean, on local and both the ordinance, yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We have ordinance of course three. We have ordinance for number one, must be, you know, the request of the senior minister and lieutenant. We have ordinance for two, must be, you know, the request of the senior lieutenant and for four, because of the signature. We have ordinance one-twenty-one for three. We should have ordinance for a supplemental revised, there are ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, we have extended schedule thirty-nine, party songs for having that person. We are adding fourteen hundred and a party songs, and there's been twenty hundred that parties.
Move the ordinance setting down December seventeenth, six-thirty PM for public hearings, same thing to be advertised.
Sorry.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. We're going to resolutions. We have resolution four-one to resolution four-forty. It's time again, any member of the public who wishes to address on any of these particular resolutions. Our last, please, you have five minutes to address the council, state the name and address.
Eddie and Irene, twenty Jefferson Avenue. Can you tell me more about Resolution twelve, fourteen, fifteen? It's on page four B, four down, in the top. Pass through Livingston Avenue.
As you know, the city has been looking to do what's called a road diet along Livingston Avenue from New Street out to almost Nassau Street. Livingston Avenue is a county, county road. The county is undertaking a concept study of the road diet to come up with a concept design. The cost for that, they went out and got a cost in that from Newberry Engineering, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars, and the city, it has agreed to pay for half of that cost. So that is what this is, and they will be going, studying, a study of this, which is expected to last about four months. It's expected to be, we've had four public meetings to get public comment on the process. Once that gets done, they will be going into final design, hopefully, and end up getting a road diet or something similar to that out there, which hopefully will have bike lanes, other pedestrian improvements to make that a complete street.
Thank you.
All for that. I highly recommend that anybody here go to the county tomorrow night, right across the street, and argue for more improvements to Livingston Avenue. What's done there now is, I guess, an improvement, but road diets, as I've been reading on the federal transportation website, do not directly impact pedestrian fatalities. And we've had a few on Livingston Avenue. We need traffic circles, roundabouts, more improvements, bump outs on the curbs, maybe lower road speeds. But on the federal website, it does not link it directly to pedestrian fatalities. It does, however, link roundabouts to a vast decrease in fatalities and traffic accidents and pedestrian injuries. So I ask a push for that, for Livingston Avenue, because it would definitely be an improvement over what's there now. And hopefully, that'll port into this engineering.
Comment, Mr. Larabino, made. Doing a road diet does help a lot for pedestrian safety. One of the most dangerous things you have on a four-lane road is what's called shadowing, where a passing car in the inner lanes is blocked view of the pedestrian by the car in the outer lane. And narrowing or reconfiguring the design of the road from four lanes to three lanes substantially increases safety to pedestrians. I'll, you know, second, other things Mr. Larabino said about supporting more pedestrian improvements and so forth out there, whether it's roundabouts or other means. But a road diet does impact pedestrian safety.
Thank you. Did you say?
Yes, I just want more. That's all.
Thank you.
We can agree on that.
Resolution twelve, fourteen, twenty-seven. It's on six of eight, second from the top. Charles Street, where it's remain relocation. Where's that being relocated to? And is that going to have any effect on the drainage right outside of the charter school there on Joyce Kilmer? Is that where that is, Charles Street and Joyce Kilmer, or is that a different spot on Charles Street?
Yes, it is by the charter school, at least the building. This is a charge to order as or main relocation. There we go.
Right at Charles Street and Joyce Kilmer, yes.
And it will help pay a challenge if that, I mean, that's what we.
So we're going to relieve some of that water back. It's going to be beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Oh, there's a resolution for purchase of a police vehicle, and it says interceptor. Is that interceptor, the Ford or sedan? Or, because I think Ford has changed the nomenclature to keep that, the Explorer in that as well. So is that, which one is that?
Captain Miller, which one you think that we're purchasing?
I do not know. I'm sure you can look it up on the foreword.
I'm quite certain you're purchasing the interceptor that looks like a Ford Explorer.
Ford, yeah.
And I've noticed that we've purchased a lot of SUVs for the police department, and I understand it good for the weather, but we don't want to have too much to offer here in New Brunswick. I understand they're roomy, but they're low imposing or intimidating. Are we going to continue, are we switching over to entirely SUV fleets, or are we going to keep some regular four doors around?
Captain Miller.
We're not switching over to an entirely vehicle, but we're going to have a mix of car and four-wheel drive people. Already a tremendous asset in the dead weather.
Oh, definitely. I was out in that storm, I believe it was last year, record shut down, and I mean, I saw the local police all over the place pushing cars with what SUVs they did have. They did not have the new ones yet, and I understand they're a great asset, and I like that we're keeping a mix, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, I'm Danielle Moore. I live at one-eighty-eight Rutgers Street. I'm up here to comment about Livingston Avenue. That's where I say that project doesn't seem to help with the traffic at all. The only way that helped, if you ever take, and if you ever take the time to go out there and sit down and watch the traffic, you said it's been four months.
Miss Danielle, remember to my race.
Okay, well, you said it's been four months since this has been laid down. I have pictures to show you now and then to show that that is not helping Livingston Avenue and Delavan Street at all. If you ask me, once you take the time to go through all of my pictures to show, that's making it much more dangerous on Livingston Avenue, because you, what, from, just like Nassau Street and Livingston, Sanford and Livingston, where you have traffic lights coming from there. When the light turns green, what do you do? You pick up speed into the one lane. It does not turn into one lane until after you get past the school. Do you, do you, so, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, believe me, before you approve to make an agreement to put down permanent diet, I think you ought to make sure that the plan, take the time to go out through the roads and make sure this is helping. Sure, it may help on the other side of Livingston Avenue due to where it's one lane already when you get to the school. So like I said, before putting down diet, please take the time to show and look at your traffic, how many accidents you have had with Livingston and Nassau and Livingston and Delavan. I will come back to you to show my other part when it comes to with the crossing guards, but it's much more dangerous there, and you need to do something due to where the kids go back, back to school next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I'll be quick, as quick as possible. Number four, this lawsuit, could I just get an update? What is the status of it? What stage in the lawsuit is it at?
I can't tell you. I don't have a specific answer. I have it for the next meeting. We're going to have to call me later in the week. I'll check.
Okay.
Free trial.
Free trial, okay.
We have an update for you, Mr. Cradville. It'll be one way until the next week. We can make it, it may be commissioned prior.
Thank you. I'll check in if I need the info. Next one is, yeah, I do want to ask a little bit about what exactly this company would be doing on Livingston Avenue with Newberry Engineering. Are they going to be actually shrinking the distance from sidewalk to sidewalk, or are they just going to be changing the lane configuration?
That's the one with the county?
Yeah, Livingston Avenue.
No, just, you try to look at the.
This is just a concept study. They're going to come up with three different alternatives, what the Stowe workforce, three different alternatives, then decide which alternative to proceed with. That would then go to the final design. But I guess kind of the point of your question, I highly doubt that there would be any actual narrowing of the carway, the curb-to-curb width. What a road diet does is just essentially reline the street, similar to what is done out there, but it will include bike lanes and other improvements out there to make it a safer place for all the users of the street. It doesn't narrow the physical width of the road, it just reconfigures how the lanes.
Mr. Patterson, you also mentioned that there will be four-wheel drive.
Yes, there will be, the contract calls for four public meetings.
So you will have a chance, the public will have a, a, an opportunity to address new structures to pay for this.
My favorite. I love public meetings. Livingston Avenue needs more. You can put me in that camp as well. I think that, you know, narrowing the carway would be good, bike lanes, good, bump outs, good. There's more that we can do, and I look forward to this. I do want to just confirm, we have an agreement with the county to pay for half of this concept study. Do we also have an agreement with them to pay for half of what ultimately is proposed?
I don't know that information at this point, do we know?
Not at this time, but if that's something that don't work out, we're going to get to that bridge.
Do you want that information at any point?
Thank you. One moment, please. Okay, questions were already asked about Charles Street. I do, while we're on the topic of police vehicles, is it true that the police department has obtained a vehicle from the United States Military Department of Defense?
Captain Miller.
I don't think that's part of the.
So I guess wait until the, the, they'll make some progress to that question for you. I guess, you know, we wait and get the answer.
Okay, okay. I'll stick around. I do want to ask about thirty-three. What was the emergency at the water utility, and has it been resolved? When was it resolved?
Electrical problem on cell four. There's four cells within the membrane side of the plant. We brought a gentleman in to do a diagnostic on it for eight hundred dollars, made the repair. I think that's two or three weeks ago at this point.
Can I ask, thirty-seven, what does this company provide? Lighthouse Computers?
Sure. Number thirty-seven is for the purchase of software that will be used for our cable access channel, which is channel twelve. The channel's been off the air for at least a month now because the software was old and gave out. Lighthouse Computers was the vendor. They gave us the software last time. This is for the purchase of new software that will be able to get our channel back on the air and functioning properly.
Thank you.
And will this software also just stop working one day and be forced to buy software again? Is that built in?
Just, how long will this software?
Well, as with most technology that has to be replaced, I don't know how old the old program was. I can tell you it was old and was not functioning properly and was not when I showed up. This is the current project to get it back up and running to the best it can be right now.
So hopefully, we'll ask for those things.
I hope so. And I want to ask, does the system have the capability
I know you wouldn't ask that.
To broadcast these meetings on the New Brunswick channel?
Not live.
Not live.
But perhaps video later in the week?
It has the ability to show video.
So there, so.
That's great. I expect that the council will put these meetings on channel twelve, and that's great to hear. I expect that to happen. Thirty-nine is a large expense for the water utility. I just ask, what, I guess, what the nature of it is? I know we've talked a lot about generators, but, you know, why is this company being chosen? Where is the generator going to be?
Mr. Patterson?
It's being chosen because it's a little bitter, and we're adding a second generator to the water treatment plant because we feel it's advisable to do so. And we're seeking FEMA reimbursement for the expense.
Terrific. And is there a plan for when that would be installed and on time? And is there a plan for when that would be installed and on what time?
No, I don't. We're gonna have a pre-construction meeting with Envirocon shortly. We'll get a better idea at that point.
These ideas from the public, so I gotta say council on the resolutions?
Motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
I.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We are gonna start on the public portion part of the meeting. Does any member of the council wish to address the public before we start? At this time, it's the public portion of the meeting. So I just wanted to remind everyone that you have five minutes to address the council, state your name and address. And as I mentioned on the last meeting, we are, we expect to have a, a, a civil conversation. And if it goes out of hand and you are deemed to be out of order, we will be asked to, to stop that behavior. And if it doesn't happen, we're gonna ask you to leave. And if you don't leave, we will have the police just for you out of the dead of the meeting. So on that note, we open with public.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore, 188 Rutgers Street. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One, that's where I noticed with the water department. The water department used to flush the pipes at nighttime, maybe two AM, three AM. But if you could please tell me why they are flushing the pipes during the morning time? I would like to know why. Is it because the city does not want to pay overtime? Too cheap to pay overtime? But why are they flushing pipes, dirtying the school water, the public water, restaurant water during the day?
Director?
Why are we flushing the waters during the sun or in the rain?
It may not be fair for the director to answer. We've been doing this for years and it is an attempt to keep overtime down. You're not too cheap to pay overtime. In fact, our overtime expenditures are actually rather large. Most towns in the area do flush during the day. We have been doing it for a number of years now in areas where we did not think there was going to be an adverse impact. If in fact there was in the area that you're talking about, we'll take a look at that practice going forward. But we have been flushing at night in the hospital areas, the restaurant areas. And we've been doing it in the day where we thought it was a lone impact situation on our residents. And actually, the feedback over the last couple of years has not been negative whatsoever.
Director, you wanted to make this?
Yeah, a lot of utilities flush during the day because most people now, both parents are working and nobody's home in the middle of the day. And they're doing laundry at night and those kind of chores that, so many utilities have found that it's less disruptive to do it during the middle of the day.
Okay, my point is, okay, I understand what you're saying. It's true, everyone's at work. My point is, wow, this was by Roosevelt School? This was during the morning time due to where the children drink the water? Uh, that was by Handy and Livingston, Sedan and Livingston? With the, that was Monday morning about ten AM. Like I said, I know people aren't home during the day. But like I said, in the school district, due to where our children drink some water from the fountain, I don't think that would be right. Maybe for certain areas, like you said, restaurants, you do at night, maybe the same thing for schools though. So please take a look into that and to show where they were flushing pipes by Roosevelt School Monday. And my second thing that I'm here for, that's with Livingston and Delavan. If you could please tell me, due to where the kids are going back to school next month? What is the plan for crossing guard, police officer? What is the plan that's gonna be for the children there? But one, by the picture that I'm showing you, like I told you, what, by time you get to Livingston and Delavan, you still have a two lane with a crossing guard where she is still there. What, she cannot control four walkways. One go across Delavan, Livingston, Livingston, Delavan. So please tell me, what is the plan when the kids are gonna go back to school? Due to where that, that one lane is not helping, like I told you, due to where it's next to the traffic light. Well, you see, once the light turns green, what, all the cars are just pulling out at one time. It's not no one lane when you get to Delavan. So please, like I said, I hope you take a look at the pictures and you even take the time to go over there and see to make it safe for the children. And another thing is maybe you can give Mr. Catlin or the Board of Social Service a note to also tell the parents to take responsibility in telling their children what to do and what not to do, to make it safer for all the kids so nothing should ever happen.
Thank you. Captain Miller, do you know the plans for the crossing guards in that area?
I don't know, I don't know the exact specifics of what's going to happen there when they return to school. But I know that our traffic safety unit has had several meetings with the school system and the Board of Education. They're putting a plan together to make that.
Well, okay, like I showed you, I showed you the pictures, okay? You have a child on this corner, you have a child on that corner, she cannot control crossing four different corners.
If that's why, like Captain Miller said, that they are really, they're aggressive and then if there's a challenge afterwards, it's a little slow. Give them a call and so that way they could address it.
I will say that I'm a little late saying it, where I will thank you for taking care of the crossing guards. Well, wow, I do see a lot more crossing guards out on the road. I will say thank you for taking that seriously, for giving them a raise. Like I said, I'm a little late on it, but yeah, it's here.
Thank you.
There you go, sweetie.
Captain Miller, I have a question for you. So has the police department received a military vehicle from the army recently?
Not from the army, but we did receive a military vehicle, yes.
Thank you.
Want details or?
If you could.
We received, uh, the government classifies it a utility truck van. The police department has been outfitted as a new community mobile police precinct. The police precinct we have now, you can see parked around town, is almost, I believe, over eighteen years old. It is starting to show some wear and tear and this is gonna be a new vehicle to, hopefully we can have them both out there at the same time. Eventually, the old one is gonna die, so this will be replacing that one. And also, to Mr. Arvina, it is six-wheel drive. It is, the secondary purpose will be to use in big storms like Sandy as a rescue vehicle. But its primary purpose is a mobile police precinct. It's gonna be equipped as a small office, just like the other precinct is.
Thank you. Mr. Cradville?
Thank you. Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I do want to ask whether there are any other things that the New Brunswick Police Department received from the Department of Defense this year?
Do you see any for the Department of Defense, the police department?
Yes. Quite a number, thanks. Did I get some details on what those things are?
Can you tell the details?
I'll try to, because I don't have everything I have. We received computers, generators, some optical equipment, coffee maker. Yeah, you can laugh, but we have detectives that stay here for two or three days in the Rose on Friday to make an investigation. Coffee is a life stake for many people, so you can laugh when you want. I did want to ask about the coffee maker. It was valued at two hundred and thirty-eight dollars by the federal government. What is?
Well, that's the most expensive coffee.
Well, is it that the coffee is so good or is it extremely large? Why?
He's a taxi mom.
Do we have control on all of the value?
As far as the prices, the title number puts it, I can't comment. I can't say anything, I haven't actually tasted the coffee. I don't have the birds any better. I think, as you know, you haven't commented, but all of that equipment has its costs. The city is handing it all provided free of charge from the government.
Thank you.
And are there photographs? Can I get a photograph of the truck and the coffee maker? I don't have any photographs of it. Would it be possible, the police department to arrange for me to take a photograph of the truck? You can take a photograph of the truck when it's completed. It's still in process of being outfitted. When it's completed and we put it out into the public, then you photograph all you want. Thank you. Yeah, I want to ask what happened at the school system today? There was a lockout in schools?
Do we know, that's a question, but do we know what the situation was? Do we have any information on that?
I believe there was a concern by the police department, and maybe Mr. Miller or, excuse me, Captain Miller would better speak to it. But there was a concern, it was not school related. I think the city is issuing a statement or has already.
If there's anything that you could?
There was a police incident, a threat made at specific areas. It wasn't a threat by general public. Those areas were notified by the police department and advised to do what they felt was necessary to contact who they felt were important. And we handled the investigation and it ended very quickly.
So it wasn't specific on the schools?
There were, there was not a specific school, but the schools in general.
It was more than that.
Yes. The threat was quickly identified and eliminated and the lockout brought down.
Lockout.
That's right.
Lockout means?
Not a lockdown, it was a lockout. And could I just get a little more information on what, what the incident was or what the?
We just told you that he had been in the situation. They neutralized the situation, they identified, he came up and the lockout was taken care of.
So was that, was that right? The investigation is ongoing. There's a possibility of criminal charges down the road. I'm not gonna discuss any of those details. The threat is no longer viable. Was it, can I ask, was it a written threat or a verbal threat?
Do you want to tell me anything about it at this point, Mr. Cradville?
I'm just doing my job.
Thank you.
I do want to ask about the situation at the water utility in terms of limiting the footprint of American Water. I know that was discussed as a goal now that we have a water directive that's properly licensed.
Well, we, we limited the footprint or reduced the footprint of American Water when we entered into the twelve-month agreement. As you may recall, we reduced the, the value of the monthly contract by ten thousand dollars. Mr. Wallace and I are meeting with American Water in the very near future to look at the possibility of reducing the footprint of water.
And so the ordinances that were pulled for the water and sewer rates, it's safe to assume that's gonna be an increase in the rates and it's still coming?
I'm not assuming anything. If they will come, we will find out at the next one, as they come out.
So does the water utility have plans to increase the rates?
Well, we will introduce our rate increases next meeting for both the water and the sewer utilities. And that, over the years, has been routine. This, I would certainly agree, this was not a routine year in two thousand and fourteen. But both ordinances were not ready for introduction this evening.
Is there an approximate amount that the rate would increase, a percentage or?
I would not want to open that yet. We're still being worked on.
Not at this time.
Okay. Can I ask, I know we discussed the Red Shaw School very briefly, is there a timeframe for when that will be open?
Do we know? Anybody sort of have any information? January?
Yes, the holidays.
Great. I do want to ask about this project that's gonna be heard across the street at the Freeholder Meeting. A plan for building on Mine Street, seventeen Mine Street. It's proven to be very controversial. The hearing, perhaps the final hearing will be on December ninth, Tuesday, right there at the Freeholder Room. Is, do the council members have any opinion on this project? Do they think it's gonna be good for New Brunswick or do you have concerns about it?
Does any council member want to share a opinion on it? Not at this time, I don't have a, not at this time, and I don't have a, at this time.
Fair enough. I would encourage the council to perhaps attend the meeting and read up on it and definitely make your voice heard if you have a concern because this is the time to do it. And I specifically want to ask Vice President Egan what you feel about it, because that's your neighborhood, the sixth ward. And I've asked you about it before and you said you had not looked into it very much. And in the, and I know that there's also concerns about this developer being on the wrong side of the labor unions. And I know you're a strong union man. Can you tell me, what is your view on this developer, this building, proposed for your neighborhood?
Do you like to answer the question? So say how we feel at this time, Mr. Cradville.
Fair enough.
The five minutes is, I just, go ahead.
I need to ask about the ambulances in New Brunswick. Who runs the ambulances in New Brunswick?
Oh, yes.
Ambulances are run by Robert Wood in St. Peter's.
And there's also Rutgers as well, right?
Rutgers has, Rutgers has ambulances that are on, that respond to Rutgers campuses. When there's no ambulances available, they won't be playing like all the ambulances do where they will go out of town or other places.
Thank you for answering, it was not, thank you. You could ask about the services to the hospitals. There's any issues, great challenge.
Okay, well, I mean, I think the city has contracted them to do that, so I think it's, it will behoove you to, to.
So what is your concern, Mr. Cradville?
My concern is I don't think there are enough ambulances on duty on Halloween night. What do you, what do you have to say about that?
We addressed that already at the last meeting when we met and Joe said, we heard from the police, I mean, from the fire director. And we heard from all the members of the city staff that they said that there was no air challenge. There was, there was no challenge from the ambulances on that day.
No challenge of the ambulances.
That's what we.
And so is there any truth to what the county has said, that there was an ambulance bus requested that night to assist in New Brunswick? The bus that was parked?
They requested, to whom they requested that? To us, to the city, or they requested to the hospitals?
Someone requested from the county to come to New Brunswick, to our city.
Well, when you find out, it doesn't say that it was from the Brunswick. If you tell me that they requested it to somebody specifically in New Brunswick, we will find out. But if they requested it specifically for somebody from the hospitals, then that's a question that you need to ask the hospitals. So when you clarify that for us, we might be able to help a little bit better.
Okay, let me try to help. Is it true that there was a mass casualty incident in New Brunswick on Halloween night?
What do you define as a mass casualty?
I believe it's a term that's used in the, in the first responder industry. What, was there an MCI, a mass?
Now we're gonna have a mess. No, for the city, for the hospitals, for the city. Do we have that, that answer? We don't have to answer if we don't know the answer to that one.
No, we know everything. It wasn't an issue. It was not an MCI.
It was not an MCI. What was going on at the Rutgers Student Center then?
It's something you'd have to discuss with Rutgers.
Okay, well, so my concern is this. I think there was an MCI at the Rutgers Student Center. Why wouldn't the city know about that? Why wouldn't the city be notified immediately? If the county was being called to provide an ambulance bus, was the city left out in the loop? Because that's a concern.
Well, did you ask that question to Rutgers and see what, they're the ones that have to?
I asked the questions to everybody and so that's why I'm here tonight, is to ask you.
But we, hold on, hold on. I don't worry. We're just finishing afterwards. If you want to come up to the line, then you can say something. But right now, we're just giving, or they see somebody from the staff, we can answer that.
So the city was not included in the decision about the ambulance bus?
Do we have that answer?
The ambulance bus wasn't for the city, so we had no reason to make a decision on an ambulance bus.
So you're saying it was requested by Rutgers and New Brunswick wasn't notified?
Okay, Mr. Cradville.
We didn't say that.
That's a question, is that, is that what you're saying?
Let's not, because you asked those questions at the last time and I don't know if, ask, answer. Some of them, we already told you, there was not an issue with New Brunswick. That was Rutgers, if that was happening, then I would suggest maybe to ask Rutgers if they were saying that it was not a need for it. So at that point, there's nothing else that we can say about that. So can we go, so?
Yep, yep. So I'll sum it up real quick. I've been critical in the past, there's no representation for Rutgers and St. Peter's Hospital on the Emergency Management Council. That should change, that might improve the communication.
Thank you.
What's the deal with the fresh grocer?
Do we have, no. Do we have any updates on, on, you mean on the sites?
Yeah, what's on the plans for that?
You know the plans for it. You just, you know, because you know that they said we're looking to having another supermarket there. So, and I know that they have been so, um, uh, conversations, you see somebody coming out of that, a decision has been made, I don't think so. I don't think so. And they're still looking, searching for somebody who would be able to utilize this place.
The Wilson parking deck is, what's gonna happen there? I believe it's been sold, or there's a deal to sell it.
Wilson, that was the, that was the last, if I recall correctly, that's the one that was already a, a city park, right? Because in the, that's a county that they were gonna do. But I don't know.
I believe the plan is a county park could be managed by the city.
By the city, yeah. That was the last thing that we, we wanted to do.
Mr. Ed O'Rourke still suspended without pay pending the hearing?
Mr. Cradman?
Yes.
Has it been scheduled?
How is that scheduled?
Has it been scheduled? Okay. Well, it appears I'm almost out of time, so I'll just thank you for my time. Just ask one final question about Rutgers Police jurisdiction issue. It's been almost a year since their jurisdiction's been changed. Does the council feel that that was a good change? Do you support the change, or do you think it needs to be revisited?
So far, what we know has been working, and we show you, you, some, there were some questions that you have brought before about the DUIs and all of that, and the change that you had, it's better, it has impacted that point in terms of the cooperation that they have. On the contrary, now they're working together, and they continue to work together. The partnership is working fine, so I don't have any concerns at this time about it. I don't know anybody else, but I don't.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyler Van Kirk. I live at 124 Bayard Street here in New Brunswick. And I have a question about the ordinances on first reading tonight, and I guess really just a process question to start.
The ordinance has passed already, so...
No, the ordinances on first reading.
The first reading, we kind of talk of first reading.
Well, I just, I have a process question about them. I'm sort of...
So why is that?
The, so, because I know you guys are saying you don't have any information, the ordinances haven't actually been released yet. Do they, so they'll be introduced for second reading at the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
They need to be introduced personally first.
Okay, okay. All right, so that is, that's really my question. And we'll be getting the details on those sometime tomorrow?
No.
There's no, at least it's Friday.
No, the water's over.
Okay. So my other question, I guess in preparation for that, is also in line with our contract with American Water. How much has the city of New Brunswick paid American Water so far for their services this year?
We haven't paid them anything yet this year.
Okay.
But their bills from dating back to, I believe the start date was July 7th, would be roughly $400,000. We have not processed the payments yet.
Okay. And so in that vein, if we fill the, fulfill the remainder of the contract as it's, you know, exists, and I was just agreed upon, how much more will we owe them by the time the contract expires?
The contract is good for, at present, eight and a half months into 2015, and at the moment, we are paying them a monthly fee of $70,000 a year, excuse me, a month. And as I said, we are about to talk with them and restructure some things so that we can reduce the footprint, as we said. So it's seven, eight and a half months times $70,000 minus where we renegotiate with them.
Okay. And is, do we have, does the city of New Brunswick have a plan in place for what we would like that renegotiation to entail? Are we asking to essentially be removed from the contract, out of the contract? Is that what we're gonna be asking?
I'm not asking, I'm not asking to be removed from the contract at this point.
Okay.
Our, it has been said a number of times in this room that it is our philosophy to run a fully municipal operation. Once again, we're not there yet.
Great, and that's, you know, really, I support that. I think we should be running a fully municipal operation. And just so, to clarify, what services is American Water providing us? Because we have a director now. What services is American Water providing us right now that can't be covered by municipal employees?
A T-4 operator at the plant, inasmuch as we ask Mr. Wallace to be the director and to work at the city hall here. We are not asking him to be the water treatment plant superintendent. So we are buying T-4 services at the treatment plant. We're buying W-4 services, which deals with the distribution system, and we are buying some shift supervisors who are licensed, not with T-4s, but some licenses that are slightly less than that. Those people are helping us manage the treatment plant in off-hours.
Okay. And the city of New Brunswick doesn't employ anybody directly that could fill those roles at present?
No, we did. We did in the past, and we'll continue looking for the future we have.
Okay. Yeah, that's really the gist of my question. And I guess I'm just, the new director's Mr. Wallace, right? Does he, he doesn't have the T-4 license, or he has it, but we're not asking him to be the operator at the plant? I'm just...
Mr. Cradman, just explain that he does have it.
Okay, I guess I just didn't follow. I'm sorry, I was a little slow.
He does have it, but we're not asking to be the superintendent of it.
Okay.
Our plan is to one day employ a second T-4 operator, who then would be given the assignment of being the water treatment plant superintendent. He would, he or she would work entirely out of that plant, and be responsible for water quality every day, under Mr. Wallace's guidance.
Okay, great. And when we renegotiate the, assuming we renegotiate the contract with American Water, will those details be, does that have to be approved by the council, or will that be made public?
Yes. Everything goes, when we go, if you change. I know we have both the initial agreement.
You've approved two agreements at this point. The interim agreement in early July, and then the 12-month agreement, I think it was dated sometime in September. I'd be happy to share with you what we're able to negotiate with them going forward.
Okay, great. And I would just ask that, again, be made public, put up on the website, so folks can input. Thank you very much, Council President, for coming to the council. How great.
Anthony Labrina, 20 Jefferson Avenue, New Brunswick. Asking questions at the previous meeting. I want to know, we had any kind of answers. I requested that we look into some lower lighting fixtures on Eastern Avenue to provide some visibility of pedestrians crossing the street and some safety there. What, has anything been done to look at that as an option, or how much of a cost possibly?
Mr. Cradman, I know that the last time he did mention that situation, PSENG, and that we need to...
PSENG is responsible for street lighting, that's for sure. We pay them dearly to light the streets in town. I've taken no actions at the previous meeting. I didn't realize that was something we needed to look at.
Please do this.
Why is it, if anything, if anything, that we need to do?
For most of Eastern, there's only lights on one side, and they're, you know, the very tall kind of highway lights that, I mean, it doesn't provide enough lighting to people that are on the ground. Yet, it provides some lights, I understand that, but not to both sides of the street, and not where it's needed most. Like on George Street, you can clearly see pedestrians that are waiting on the sidewalk without a doubt. The lights are maybe 10, 12, I don't know, feet off the ground, possibly 15, very low, much lower than what's on Eastern Avenue. Please request that we can look at that. So I also have this question about closing George Street for major events, i.e. Halloween night, New Year's Eve, St. Patrick's Day, Rutgers home games. Closing it in downtown to increase safety, pedestrian safety, emergency vehicle access, and control of kind of the walking crowds, you know, by having an officer that's kind of at every corner, making sure the street is closed down. You also have an officer making sure everybody's, you know, being cool, and there for questions or anything like that, maybe needs any help. And all that parking on George Street for emergency vehicles in case something does happen. So do we need to look at that?
I know you mentioned that, and I don't know if it is something that you think, in terms of discussing, I'm not sure that would be also in the, that would be also something that has to do with the police department, the safety, also, it would be something that you, because, you know, that we don't have to look at, if that's something that is feasible to be done here in New Brunswick.
Right. This does work in other cities? Austin, Texas is probably one of the largest, that they close down a street that's open to vehicle traffic every Friday, Saturday night. We don't have to do that here, I get that, it might be too much. But I know Little Rock also closes a block to one of their main streets for weekends, but maybe for major events, we can consider something like that. Like Cyclone B, I mean, George Street's closed, that would be...
I was gonna say, I would also say, yeah, it's totally different.
Right, different timeframes.
Different time, and it's a different kind of activities. So, but your suggestions were taken. We'll see, that was something that the city is able to do, and it's something that it will be a benefit for.
Thank you. And I think it was reported that there were one or two minor pedestrian incidents with vehicles on Halloween night. So something to look at. I mean, people get, you know, a lot of order, maybe, maybe it wasn't all the cars, but I have no idea what the circumstance was, but I think there weren't any cars there, it would be a little bit different. And you keep the side streets open so people can move around, the parking decks and all that good stuff. Also, asked about an inspection complaint. It was CPT-14-178 against 17 Mine Street. I asked what were the fines levied, and I was told that you would look into how much money they've had to pay the city for these completely derelict and unsafe properties.
I'm sorry, I'll have to get the information after the meeting. Maybe our inspection division can chat with Mr. Barbina after the meeting as well.
We'll make sure that he get all that information for the meeting.
Fantastic. The complaint's in there. I haven't had the time to go down to City Hall or wherever, I can find out, or I can pick up a complaint form. It's horrible, completely unsafe. The buildings are falling apart. They've been left for five years, or something needs to be done.
And because of the older, and as they create a problem, right?
People need to pay. You know, I can't let my car, my house fall apart type of thing, so...
Yes, please.
It's pretty fenced around, though. There's fencing around the property. I drove down Mine Street today, and it's fenced around, so...
I understand.
So, as you know, it's fenced, it's just saying that it's not being kept.
Well, they're gonna be demoed soon.
That's not...
They're ready to be demoed.
Right, but that, they're getting ready, I'm sorry, Council President. The buildings...
That'll come from the Building Department, you can ask the building department what the permits are taking out. I think they cut sewer.
Well, we have to, we have to find, like I said, we'll say complaint, please, so he just wants to see what happens.
Yeah, I know some pictures, right? Mr. Wallace, so... We'll find out more, but if he wants to come down by your office tomorrow at 255 Bayard, you can just...
Mr. President?
The owners' property are looking to demolish those buildings eventually, or the construction fencing is up there. They ask for an extension to be able to do some of the utility cutoffs and some of those other actions that need to be done before you can do that. They have done some of that. I'm not sure of the exact current status of it, but they're moving towards being able to move ahead with demolishing the buildings.
So if we can find out, because I know that it's understandable that it's gonna be demolished, but if this is, I saw to the community, to the area, we should be taking it off.
Well, it is fenced off. There is some siding sort of missing and so forth, but the way they are intending to cure it is to demolish the building.
Oh, yeah, and I understand, but if the homeowner does have fencing property that is gonna be, is taking care of, he probably will get a summons, because the property's not working, right? It's hard to say, so I'm just saying that it's worth looking at and seeing what happens to the complaint, and if something that is gonna be demolished soon, you know, so I just have an answer, but what if it happens?
Right. The demolition, they're planning to demo it. They haven't gotten the parking variance they need, and it's been, it's been sitting there for five years like this. There's no lighting, it's very dark. It doesn't look good. They don't even mow the grass. Come on, there's gotta be something that we can do with this. I understand it's fenced off and slated for demo, but, and I don't know how the ordinances work for fencing out. Okay. Also, I've been, I've spent a lot of time with Bertanboy, and I don't know, it's been Bertanboy, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, but it is crazy with schoolchildren, because they have a lot of schools, like New Brunswick, we have a lot of schools. They have two crossing guards per corner, in most corners. I think on Livingston Avenue, that is a very, an enjoy-skill mark, something to look at, possibly to make sure these kids get across the street safely. It's very important, and one crossing guard can't manage all these kids, especially trying to yell across Livingston Avenue for some children to stop or something like that, from crossing out to the middle of the street. That's not gonna happen with the cars, with the noise generated by that road. So two crossing guards would be fantastic, if we can...
Yeah, like, as you guys said before, they have the keyes, and they will address, well, to be the best...
I think you say at one of those school are the crossing guard.
Oh, that, okay, great.
And also, in Jersey, where they said there are two crossing ones, one, you know, by the park, or some of the parks, there's two right there, and they're not even about the park. So for, for Livingston Avenue, like, Captain, we're certain they have the keyes, and I'm pretty sure that they would do the best possible.
Fantastic. Okay, so I pay taxes here, about $6,800 a year. So how do I apply for tax payment, so I don't have to pay my full amount of taxes? My daughter does not go to our school system here in New Brunswick, she goes to charge, so I'd like to pay them direct. I would not like to pay property taxes. How can I do that?
Because it's all based, because your children go to a different school, you're making repairs, there's an application form you can get from the Sessions Office, and you can get a payment.[1751.11]